Mr. Gibson.
Here.
Dr. Orth. Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Crisco.
Here.
Mr. Bizani.
Here.
Mr. Nikosia.
Here.
All present.
At this time, we're going to have our invocation by Reverend McGivens, and after which, Mr. Devin Hurley from Peaslee Middle School, student council president, will lead us into our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you again for having me. It's an honor to pray over this meeting. Let's pray. Thank you, Lord, for your presence in this place tonight. We humbly ask for your wisdom that you freely give to those who honor you, and for the peace to prevail in this meeting. We're grateful for our democratic republic and for the voice that we have as American citizens. We thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord, for our county supervisors and administrators and employees, for our law enforcement officials and judges, and for the law-abiding citizens of Gloucester County, including all these folks in here. Thank you for our precious children and for those who are dedicated to providing them with an excellent education and to keeping our schools safe. Above all, Lord, guard our children's hearts and minds and shield them from harm. Lord, you promise that if we turn from evil, you will hear our prayers, forgive us, and heal our land. Thank you. That is beginning to happen before our very eyes. We are full of hope, full of future, in spite of the challenges we face as a nation. We are blessed. We are blessed to live in Gloucester County, Virginia. God bless our county. God bless America. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend McGivens. Thank you, Devin, for leading us into our Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, we'll have the approval of our minutes. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we'll have the adoption of the agenda. Any question? No question? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of our consent agenda. Any question? No question? All in favor?
Aye.
Matters presented by the board. Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So several weeks ago, we had a gentleman that came to us with a bucket that had a bunch of filters in it and expressed his concern about the water quality at his house, which he said he has spent a fair amount of money trying to fix. Well, this was an issue that utilities approached, and thanks, Ms. Legg, for directing our utilities to deal with that problem. So on Friday, the staff began to dig. And on the Friday, it took them pretty much all day to dig down to the eight-inch line, cut it, insert a T that would then allow them to link into a two-inch line, which they did yesterday, but they also had to trench on Monday. They must have had 10 people. I think the entire staff was there on Monday trenching. And then today, they hooked up five houses that now would have pressure and hopefully clean water. So I think the problem that was addressed by the gentleman here, because I went to his house Friday, knocked on his door, told him who I was, and was hoping that the problem that he was addressing to the board would be resolved. So I'm hoping that we'll have some good news from him. When I talked to the people today, because I went there to see the hookups, they were saying that it may take a few minutes for the water to be rushed out of their house and cleaned up, but they should have much better pressure because the lines, which were galvanized, are now plastic, or whatever, plastic. So they should have much better pressure. But the issue that I want to point out is the way these utility people worked. They worked all day long. They worked really hard. They were professional. They made sure there were no leaks. As a matter of fact, on Friday, when they dug the hole and tried to connect this piece of equipment, they weighed 1,000 pounds, to the eight-inch lines, they started to water back up. It started leaking. They had to disassemble the entire operation and put it back together again because obviously they don't want leaks. But the professionalism of these people were very impressive, and we should be very thankful. We have a really great, dedicated staff on our utilities. And this is just one of the many problems that we've got. And we heard those from Ms. Legg the other day of what we have to address. And I know these are some of the problems that we'll be talking about as we go through our budget process. But again, thanks, Ms. Legg, for having a great staff. And I enjoy talking with them. I'm on the utility subcommittee, so I got to know a lot of the people there. And they're very helpful when I ask questions about this, that, whatever. They weren't intimidated by me knowing that I'm sort of one of the seven. But it was really great to interact with them over the last couple of days. They're a fine bunch of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Orth. Any other board members? If there's none, Lewondaw County Administrator.
Yes, thank you. A couple items to share with you. First of all, I want to remind everybody that it is Restaurant Week in Gloucester, so eat out. I know we've got at least one restaurant owner here who's participating in the audience tonight. I meant to send out a note just to let you know that there wasn't a weekly report from last week. It wasn't that there wasn't a lot going on, but it wasn't anything new. So I just wanted to make sure you knew you didn't miss one, and I hadn't forgotten. We have Gloucester Clean Days coming up. Want to make sure everybody's aware of that event and registering. So that's on March 29th. And prior to that, in the next, say, within the next week to two weeks, every resident will be receiving a flood awareness guide. For the, as you all adopted in the consent agenda, the Flood Awareness Week is March 9th through the 15th. The board's aware that we are a CRS Class 5-rated community with 25% discount on the flood insurance for all the people in the county who have to get flood insurance. And one of the ways that we achieve that is continuing the education, which the guide will have a lot of good information for people to use, and they can also look on our website, too. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. At this time, we'll move on to our scheduled presentation. Ms. Galloway.
Good evening. Yeah, you went, I mean, Mr. Bizani just did my presentation for me. If you'd like me to skip over, I'm happy to do so. Good evening. So tonight, I'll be presenting the mid-year financial report, unaudited, as I always like to disclaim. This presentation is pretty much going to highlight the general fund, the highlights of what's happened so far this year. A full copy of the financial statements is provided in the board packet on page 30. So beginning with real estate tax. As you all know from the past two years, we did miss our real estate revenue targets in fiscal year '23 and '24. So that required a little reevaluation for our fiscal year '25 budget to make sure we weren't in that same position. So I worked really hard with the commissioner and the assessor and brought that real estate budget down. As you can see in that chart, in the middle, fiscal year '25, the budget for real estate tax was reduced by $640,000, or 2%, which is pretty significant. So where are we now? Right on target, which is great. I love to see this. As you can see in that red circle, the top two, 49%, are where we were percentage of actual received in '23 and '24. So midway through the year, the last two years, we were at 49% of our revenue. We're at 49% of our budget right now, so I think we're in pretty good shape to be meeting that revenue target for this year. Personal property tax. So year-to-date, we've received 44% of our budgeted personal property tax. And so that is lagging a little bit in comparison with fiscal year '24. As you can see in the chart on the bottom right, fiscal year '24, at this point, we had collected 45%, so we're about 1% less this year. To explain a little bit of the challenges we're having, values. So the values of the vehicles, mostly vehicles, are what drive our revenues for personal property tax. And that chart, the bar chart with the orange line, shows you where our vehicles' values have gone in the last four years. So in 2021, they were down, and then spiked way up, and now we're seeing them come back down. So that's created quite the tricky situation to try to estimate where we're going to be with revenue, even though we're trying our best to predict that. Also factoring in here is veterans exemptions, which I should have also mentioned, for real estate tax. Those have grown over the last several years, as you all know. And so that also is a downward pressure on these revenues. All in all, it is a little early for me to say whether or not we're going to hit our budget for personal property tax, but I think we're going to be pretty close. So other local taxes. This is some of the smaller revenue sources that we always like to look at because they've been good growers for us recently. So this is sales tax, meals, and lodging tax. So as you can see in those top two charts, the bar chart is sales tax. You can see that steady step up, and expecting we're going to be a little bit higher in fiscal year '25 compared to '24. Same with meals and lodging. Those have both grown. But what I wanted to kind of point out here is that notably the meals tax, that blue mountain, if you will, how it's kind of starting to level out. I think we may have hit that peak, and we're not declining in our revenue, but we're not seeing that huge upward growth there either. At the bottom, you can see where we are year-to-date. 53% of budget for lodging, meals is at 50%, and sales is at 49%. So all of these, I believe, will meet budgets for fiscal year '25, with lodging likely being a little bit higher than budgeted. Okay, so I've said, I think, multiple times now, leveling out. And so I wanted to show a little bit on the growth of these revenue sources. But I want to point out that that growth chart I'm showing is percentage growth. It's not actual revenues. So our revenues aren't tanking. Everything is still above zero, which means it's still growing. But you can see how substantially that growth is starting to fall off and kind of starting to come together as well, where we are now seeing in fiscal year '24 to '25 closer to that 5% growth, and that those days of double-digit growth may be behind us for a little while. But again, everything is positive. This is just meals, lodging, and sales. It just gives some perspective on what we're working with moving forward. So interest revenue is something that, again, I've been talking about in my presentations because it just became an actual revenue source, where it previously really wasn't something that we talked about. So that blue line in the bar chart on the left shows you our rate and how it was pretty much zero in fiscal year '21, spiked above 5%, and again, leveling out. We're starting to come back down. We've kind of hit that peak. So in fiscal year '24, we were at $1.2 million of interest revenue in the general fund. I think we're going to start to see that come down again. In that lighter blue chart, you can see 4.7% was our interest rate as of February, so that is down a little bit from the 5.27%.
Does the interest rate include the interest that's coming from the sales tax revenue for the schools?
No.
Separate?
It's in a separate fund.
So we're keeping that separate?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have that later in the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So we've talked about several of the general fund revenues. So I just wanted to show some perspective of how they look in the pie. So this is the pie of general fund revenues and how our revenue is made up. 61% general property taxes, 20% other local taxes, and then state revenue is 12%. Those are our three largest revenue sources, and they make up 93% of our general revenue. So for perspective, two of those three revenues I've just talked about that we're starting to see that leveling of the revenue. So a little bit of setting the stage for where we're seeing revenue projections for upcoming budget deliberations. This gives some perspective to what our major revenue sources are. And then one more fun discussion on pies. I thought it would be interesting to look back at history and see, what did our pie look like in 2015, so 10 years ago? And what I found is that 10 years ago, we had a little bit higher reliance on the property taxes. 65% of our revenue was property taxes versus 61% now. And then the opposite has happened with other local taxes, which includes that sales, meals, lodging tax, where it used to make up 16% of our budget, now it's 20%. So what this tells me is that we've taken good advantage of that natural growth that we've talked about. And then it will bring up some good discussions for where that growth is starting to slow and what we need to do moving forward. So moving ahead to general fund expenditures. This is a bar chart of where our spending is, 50% through the year, and that red line is 50%. In total, the general fund budget is about 46% spent. I wanted to mention that general government administration, that includes the county's insurance, which is paid upfront. So if we were to remove that insurance expense, then general administration would be 44% spent. So that's why that looks the way it does. So if we're only 46% spent in the general fund, we've got to have some savings somewhere. And most of where we're seeing that, similar to previous years, is in vacancies. A lot of this is having to do with the health insurance. And as you know, we don't have any input, nor would we want to, on employees' health insurance selections, but we must budget for health insurance, especially for any vacant positions. So generally, that has some cost savings if we haven't seen that same level of taking us up on that insurance is what we budgeted for. And then another note on insurance is that those costs are going to increase for fiscal year '26, and I'll mention that later on in the presentation with a little bit more detail. Ultimately, rebudgeted for about $400,000 in vacancy savings. I do think we're going to exceed that by a bit. Still a little bit too early to tell. We've only had now eight payrolls in this fiscal year. But we are, I believe, much closer in margin than we have been in the past couple of years. Health insurance. We actually budgeted a health insurance savings this year because of what I just mentioned, that we budget everybody that has insurance to have it, and if they switch, sometimes we see some savings. So we estimated that this year at $107,000. Right now, if all continues the same, it's probably going to be more like $229,000. So a little bit more savings than what we expected. This is the unassigned fund balance. It has the same exact chart that you have seen previously this fiscal year. Because I'm an accountant, I like to not count my chickens before they've hatched. So I've done a little bit of that, just explaining that we're going to have some savings likely in vacancies, but you're not going to see that here on that chart yet. So as we've talked before, $3.3 million is our excess fund balance over our fund balance policy that we have to work with for fiscal year '26. And that takes into account our audited fund balance from fiscal year '24 as well as fiscal year '25 budgeted use of fund balance. This school sales tax fund, so something I always want to make sure to present separately. So to date, you can see those cumulative numbers. Dr. Orth brought up the interest earnings. We have earned a total of $1.024 million in interest earnings on these sales tax funds, and those remain in this fund. And they also are not included in any of the models that were previously projected out for the use of that sales tax money. So six months of receipts, we are at 49% budget. So the first six months are coming in about 3% higher than 2024, but we budgeted 5.5%. So it is possible that these sales tax earnings might come in a little under budget. But as you can see, our interest earnings are already 132% earned. So we're going to meet those budgets between the two as far as the fund is concerned.
Where is the money deposited? Is it a savings account, a high-earning savings account? Or where do you have, since that's a significant chunk of change?
Yeah, and that's in a, I probably should direct you to the treasurer. I know a little bit about it, that it is in a bank account, but Chesapeake Bank is who we bank with, and they do match the. We can also use the local government investment pool. We're kind of limited in how we can invest money as a local government, so we can't go put the money in the stock market. But we do have that option for the investment pool, but Chesapeake will match the interest rate of the investment pool. So we've generally kept it because it saves personnel time in moving things back and forth. Okay, so looking forward. Just kind of a little summary of what we're talking about. Revenue-wise, we are seeing the sales tax leveling, as I mentioned. Real estate revenue decreasing due mainly to slowing growth. 0.6% growth is what I received from the assessor on the market values, which is 2025 compared to 2024. Also increasing tax relief. You've heard us say that before. Declining auto values, which I showed tonight, as well as decreasing interest rates. If you look at the expenditure side, we're looking at inflation again. I've been keeping track of those newer reports. It's ticking up again. And so that's coming to us in the form of increased maintenance costs as well as increased contractual costs that are being passed through from our vendors. Personnel costs. So I said that health insurance rates are going up. The initial estimate from our health insurance consultant was 26.1%. Very happy to report tonight that it is not 26.1. It has now gone down to 12.5, and we are still hoping for further negotiations. Either way, a substantial increase on an already very large number. And then requests for new positions in the upcoming year as well as the ongoing salary study that we're conducting and COLA to keep us competitive in the future years with our neighbors. So that's all some pretty doomsday-type of stuff. So there is a little bit of positive. Insurance-wise, our insurance has a smaller increase than we have seen in past years. We did change vendors last year and saw some savings there. And right now, we're estimating 1.5% increase on insurance, which is one of the lower increases we've had in past years. Also, keeping our fingers crossed for potential revenue for additional state funding for the schools. So we're watching what happens with the General Assembly and hoping that that will result in some additional state funding. And then, as I mentioned with the savings, vacancy savings, we are predicting that we're going to have additional fund balance this year as well. So what's next? We will be back on the 17th to present the fiscal year '26 recommended budget. And then that budget will be adopted on April 30th. And I will be back in May to provide a third-quarter financial update. And then it'll be audit time again in year end. And in conclusion, just wrapping it all up. I do think fiscal year '25 expenditures and revenues are aligning with what we've budgeted. We are seeing some of that savings I mentioned, which we expect will yield a higher fund balance this year. But as I mentioned, that large growth is appearing to decline, and we're not going to see those high-growth rates that we saw in revenues in the past couple of years. As always, we will keep you abreast throughout the budget process. Any questions?
As always, a very clear presentation. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Any questions for Ms. Galloway?
I was just going to tell her a very clear presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, not for me. Oh, he does have a question.
I'll echo Mr. Bizani's comments. Excellent presentation. Clear, concise, to the point. But given the leveling off of all those taxes, you obviously look at the numbers, compare it to what's going on in the economy. What do you attribute that leveling off, from a high of 30% to now 5%? What's going on? Is that related to the fact that things are back to COVID, or what? What's your opinion?
COVID just had that unexpected jolt that none of us saw coming, where I think we all had that extreme pullback, and instead, it became a spending frenzy. So a lot of what we are seeing, when I see those double-digit growth, those are spending-generated revenues. So lodging, and that's where you saw that huge jump in lodging, is that nobody went anywhere. And then everybody started traveling again. But also, some of the lodging is to do with Airbnbs, I believe. And so there's some of that in there as well. And once you hit that growth, you're not going to continue that same growth rate. It's going to eventually come down, and you're going to start to see things normalize. And I likened it to the stock market. You're going to have that correction at some point that brings you back to a consistent level. So I think that's what we've been seeing.
And keep your chicken healthy, so it gets.
I will try. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Ms. Galloway? Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Moving on, public comment period. Public comment period. Please, no public comments pertaining to the public hearing. At this time.
How are you doing, folks? My name's Frank Zoll. I own Zoll Vineyards in Dutton on 198. And I put a letter forward to you. Hopefully, you had time to read it. I have tried to now do Daffodil Festival for several years in a row, and we keep getting this pushback that it's on town property and there's no alcohol to be served. And I wonder if everyone understands the licenses that are available to us and the things that we can and can't do as a winery versus a brewery. And I kind of listed those in there. But what I'd love to see is the board consider looking at allowing alcohol to be served by ABC licensees for events, specifically like cultural events, like the Daffodil Festival, on town property, whether it be in front of the administration building, Parks and Recs property. You know, I've been doing business here for five years, and we've had significant growth. And we do a lot of tourism from people from outside of the community that want to come into Gloucester. And as I sit and listen to all these revenue projections and financial numbers, I look at how we've been growing, and I feel like if you're willing to consider that, it would allow the county a whole lot of opportunities that it doesn't currently exist for people like myself or other licensees. It's almost discriminatory that I can't do the Daffodil Festival in my own community based on the current statutes. You know, and if you were willing to make a motion to consider that, we probably could do more events like they do in the River Walk, you know, in places like Urbana, and allow the board to approve and consider these licenses that we put forward. I was here five years ago to try to get my special permit approved so I could be open. And that's worked out well. I haven't had any problems with the county, the community, the sheriff. And I run a pretty good business. I've been in business for 15 years. Been in business eight, technically. We had to wait about two years to get open, but... Yeah, so that's more or less what I have to say. I mean, the difference, I think, when people here are somewhat conservative and they look at what I do as a business... look at what I do as a business, we have different opportunities as a winery, as a farm winery than a brewery. And when I go to a farmer's market, which is kind of set up like the Daffodil Festival, big open sprawling sprays, space, there's no fee to get in, people of all ages, I'm allowed to set up as early as eight o'clock in the morning. I can go until 10 o'clock at night. Typically, it doesn't run that long, but a farmer's market is a morning type event, runs four to six hours. We allow people a tablespoon of wine as a sample. They pay for that. They have to be, you know, ID, they have to be of age. And we're able to do that right at our tent. We don't require a corral or a, an enclosure like a beer garden would. And mom and her child can come up, you know, take a sip and consider if they want to purchase a product. That's actually something that the breweries can't do under the manufacturer's permit that they pull to do the beer garden on Daffodil Festival. So the wineries are a little different that way.
Mr. Zoll, could you please wrap it up?
Oh, okay. So I, I'd like you to consider that because there's, there's, it's very different between what I'm asking and, you know, what the beer gardens, you know, licenses have in place. And, you know, if you'd like me to come back and clarify it, I would. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Diane Jones from the Ware District. Speaking of water, since I have had no results from calling the water company, I guess for months now, there's a pool in my backyard. And I called them, they sent someone out, they said it was definitely the fault of the water company. There's a leak underneath the ground. And my neighbor called then a few months later and no one has come to fix it. So we still have, you know, mowing season coming now and having to go through about, I guess it's four inches of water in a space about as big as this circle in the, in the right-hand corner of my property. So I guess since y'all deal with water, I'm asking you to look into it as well, if you don't mind. And if you oversee the school system, I'm not sure how that hierarchy works, but we are really going to be hoping that they are getting rid of the DEI CRT SEL programs in the schools and concentrate on teaching children how to read, write, do math, and write in cursive. They presented a, last time I was at a school board meeting, they presented a fifth grade writing a few papers from fifth graders and they were printed. And I'm thinking that really needs to be looked into. By the third grade, every child should be writing in cursive. It's part of your brain development. And I would hate to see Gloucester County keep on the low end of testing because they're not being taught cursive. But there's a lot, there's a lot of positive stuff going on in the schools. Of course, Dr. Vladu is the most positive thing you have there. But please look into it. Don't let anything slip through your fingers as far as them continuing these destructive programs in the school system. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else? No one else? Yes. Mr. Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had one comment submitted from Kenny Hogg Senior in Gloucester Point District. Greetings. Our water treatment plants are going to continue to grow just like demand for public water will continue to grow. With that growth, the amount of water treatment sludge will also continue to grow. This needs to be heavily considered when deciding what to do about the VDH violations to be discussed this evening. I encourage you to consider replacing the current lagoon sludge drying method with a solar sludge drying method. If you decide to keep the lagoons, the only other viable option to mitigate the unlawful discharge of contaminated water over the long term is to construct a sewer pumping station at the water treatment plant with a forced main line from there to the pumping station located near Home Depot so the contaminated water can be pumped into the HRSD system. A cost benefit analysis to determine which option would be best over the long term should be conducted. There are other methods of drying sludge, but most of them would pose the same contaminated water disposal, disposal issues as the lagoons or have very high energy cost to operate. I emailed some information on utilities management to the board. Utilities asset management is something that needs immediate attention. A complete inventory of the size, type, and age of all of the pipes and accessories contained in the water and sewer systems does not exist. How can you properly manage assets if you do not know what they are? Inventories of utilities assets is crucial in developing a successful asset management program. The inventories will require a financial investment to procure professional services or additional utility staff or both to conduct the inventory. Maintenance of a lot of utilities assets does not even come close to being best practices for water and sewer utility providers, and a lot of assets receive little or no maintenance at all. This is one of those things that will require a plan of action and additional staff to implement the plan utilizing industry best practices. It will also require additional financial investment for transportation, training, tools, and equipment, and repair and replacement of materials. I suggest contracting out projects like the one underway at Colony Circle so those employees can be focused on performing normal repairs, asset maintenance, and asset location and identification. Our GIS used to have a fairly good layout of water and sewer assets. The new GIS does not come close to having what was there before. The 2007 Water and Sewer Master Plan speaks about implementing a new GIS system for the county to create a living document of the water and sewer systems assets. Why wasn't all of the utilities data transferred from the old GIS to the new GIS? GIS is an integral part of asset management. And those are all the comments, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Crowe. At this time, we will move into our public hearing. A public hearing to consider conditional use permit application for working waterfront marina. Ms. Ortiz.
Is that on? Good evening. I have quite a few slides, so I'm going to run through them pretty quickly. It's, this is all covered in the staff report in your packet and I'm going to focus mostly on the end, on the conditions of the conditional use permit. So this is an application for Aberdeen Aquatics LLC, which is owned by three partners, Marine Knapp, Ron Sopko, and Lawrence Mayer. And they want to establish a working waterfront marina through the conditional use permit. So the property is on 0.94 acres located at the end of Aberdeen Creek Road. It's currently a vacant seafood processing plant. It's been vacant for the entire time I've been with the county. And in 2013, the Course Award had been, including Mr. Sopko, asked about being able to use it to just access the water. So we allowed them to do that at the time without establishing any use on the property itself. The surrounding land uses are surrounded by Aberdeen Creek, the public landing owned by Gloucester County, which was just renovated, wooded property to the east, and then residential properties with private piers along Aberdeen Creek. So the proposed uses of working waterfront marinas, I indicated, with three floating piers with a total of 34 boat slips. They plan to rebuild the bulkhead and boat launch and construct riprap structure and living shoreline on the property, adding lights and cameras and renovating the building for storage and potentially later on an aquaculture facility and potentially office and meeting spaces. The site uses, it will not be a traditional marina, the site uses will be mainly commercial watermen. And part of the conditions are eliminating the uses. Our definition of marina is pretty broad. We allow restaurants and a lot of other uses in a marina. So this will be limited to working watermen and just very limited uses. So these are all the conditions. Again, I'm not going to go through this, we're going to go through them at the end. Several of these were revised at the planning commission and then subsequently by staff and working with the county attorney. So I'll cover that at, in the end. So the staff analysis, this is a single family zoning district. The whole area is zoned single family. So it was zoned that way, I believe, when we did the 1998 comprehensive plan and possibly the original zoning ordinance that was adopted for the county. Many of the areas in Gloucester County that are working waterfronts are zoned residential. I guess we were growing so much as a residential community that they didn't consider the working waterfronts, but we are working on an ordinance with an intern to fix that. But one of the solutions for this property was allowing it by conditional use permit as marina. So the single family zoning district is supposedly only for single family, but we do permit other uses by right and by special exceptions. And we added the CUP in 2014 based on New York River Conflict Study and allowing marinas by conditional use permit in the single family. The main reason to be a conditional use permit is that it is a residential district and it may not always be appropriate in this zoning district. So again, this just shows that all the land around it is suburban countryside. And in our comprehensive plan, it is designated as rural residential. And we also considered it as a working waterfront because of the county dock that's there. So the comprehensive plan talks about these rural areas staying low density, but it also talks about allowing traditional uses to remain and be encouraged. And as you know, we also focus a lot on working waterfronts and encourage working waterfronts and commercial seafood operations to continue and to stay in the county and hopefully to expand into the future. Also, there's a lot of recommendations in our economic chapter of our comp plan to, again, encourage watermen, working waterfronts to be a big part of our county's economic growth. The transportation impacts, again, the site is located at the end of Aberdeen, excuse me, Creek Road. There's not a lot of traffic on that road. And talking to the applicant, there's a lot of seasonal traffic for when the working watermen are out there using the dock. There's about 330 trips along the last about half mile portion between Rosewell and the end of Aberdeen Creek Road. Again, the applicant feels that most of the people that would be using this marina would be, that currently use the county dock, so they're not anticipating a lot of increase in traffic. But they will be adding 34 slips, so we do assume there might be a slight increase in traffic. It's really hard to kind of estimate the amount of traffic because most of the information is related to real marinas that have a lot of other uses there. VDOT didn't really have any comments. Again, because we are limiting the uses and not allowing a lot of accessory uses to the site, we don't anticipate a lot of additional traffic to and from the property. Again, the fiscal impacts, we assume will be positive because they are cleaning up the site that's been vacant. You know, it will increase the assessed value and also create opportunity for local businesses and taxes and, and other economic benefits related to that. And again, also personal property, machine and tools tax, and then any business licenses that might be associated with that. Again, we don't really anticipate any increase in county services above and beyond what's already needed for that area. One of the conditions that the applicant proposed was to allow emergency access from the site for emergency vehicles, you know, to the water. And then also they're proposing as a condition of use, allowing a 20-foot, 20-foot wide dredging area buff around the site. This is related to the dredging on Aberdeen Creek. The Army Corps had asked for this because once those piers go in, they're not going to be able to dredge around those, those piers. So it'll be up to the applicant to make sure that it stays navigable. Environmental impacts, so again, this application is already to go to the wetlands board and the VMRC and they're just waiting if the county approves the use for the working waterfront marina. The site is totally in the RPA, so anything that's done on there, we'll have to go through that review process as well. But it is an existing site and it would probably be considered redevelopment. Again, these are just all, you know, there are a lot of regulations related to waterfront property and so they will have to, you know, comply with all those regulations. And again, we are proposing for them to do a site plan and phase two. I'll talk about that in a little bit about the conditions, but initially they'll just be dealing with the waterfront and VMRC and the wetlands board. And then any other review would have to involve Chesapeake Bay Stormwater and Erosion and Sediment Control when they actually develop the site with the building. Again, more environmental impacts, so again, talking about the dredging. So this creek has historically been dredging and they will continue to make sure that it's dredged around their, their piers that they're putting in and they'll be solely responsible for the maintenance. Other impacts, we did coordinate with the Health Department. When they do fix up the building, they'll have to make sure that the drain field will work. They'll probably also require a public drinking source. And some of their previous complaints about the property have already been investigated and the applicant did provide this picture of the fuel tanks that were removed from the site. So again, all these issues would be addressed on the site plan when they actually renovate the building. They're proposing to renovate it to actually reduce the size mainly for storage and then possibly office area and meeting space above. And then, of course, all that would have to be required to meet state building code. So this is where I might spend a little time on the conditional use permit and conditions. So again, the conditional use permit is meant to be that it might be appropriate, but it's not always appropriate within that zoning district. So we look at all these different things to make sure it's compatible, make recommendations to the planning commission, and then the planning commission makes recommendations to you. So again, it's reviewed on a case by case basis to meet all the requirements of the conditional use. In reviewing it, these are the seven criteria. We feel that with the conditions that are proposed or have been agreed to by the applicant and supported by the planning commission, that it does meet all these criteria. So based on that, the staff recommended and the planning commission supported a recommendation for approval for consistency with the comp plan and that it's compatible with the single family zoning. So we did make the conditions and recommendations and I'm going to go through the conditions. Just to remind you, you have the opportunity to revise those conditions. So these are recommended by the planning commission, agreed to by the applicant, but certainly if the board feels that the conditions needed to be changed, this, you have the opportunity to do that. It's not like a proffer, you actually can make the conditions. So this was recommended unanimously for approval at the February 6 meeting. We did have one resident speak, a neighbor from across the creek that spoke in favor of the application. So that's the recommendation to the board. And these are the conditions and again, you have the opportunity to change them. So the first condition is that it would meet the, the, sorry. So what we try to do is actually have it in two phases. So the first phase is again, the pier, and then the second phase would be the, the building. And so we're not going to require the zoning permit for the site until the building is developed in phase two. And then the phase one improvements would allow the applicant to continue to use the site as they are now for loading and unloading of seafood. Then the, again, this is the one that classifies it as a marina and a potential aquaculture facility and kind of prohibits some of the other uses that are associated with marina like boat repairs, marine supplies, restaurants, and those other types of things. This condition number three, it again, talks about the phasing of the plan. So again, the first phase is to repair and then the second, repair the bulkheads and boat launch. And the second is to repair the existing building. And so the improvements in phase two won't incur until later. This is four is for the wells and drain fields would be appropriate to size. So again, that would be occurred at site plan. Permanent sanitary facilities would be provided when they build the building, so not in the beginning, so temporarily they might have porta potties or other things out there. Right now, there are no sanitary facilities, so this would be an improvement, but not immediately. It would be done when they actually do the building. This was something that the planning commission spent a lot of time on, but I think we resolved it. Staff was worried and I, we do get a lot of complaints about the construction up on the Carver's Creek Solar. So we were concerned about construction activities carrying the noise on the working, on the waterfront. So the, they amended the conditions from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Again, this doesn't, you know, this, this would only be for construction when they're actually working on the site. And then the hours of operation, again, these are watermen. So, you know, it's 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM weekends and weekdays. The applicant is really not proposing hours of operation, the watermen will just come and use the boats. And the noise from the vehicles are not included in the noise ordinance unless they are, you know, not legally in compliance with the code. So hours of operation was something I was concerned about mainly for noise, but it did not seem to be a concern with the neighbors, so. So this, number eight, is no more than 34 boat slips or floating piers. Number nine, applicant is responsible for the dredging. 10, the dumpsters and other waste facilities will not be visible and they'll be screened from adjacent properties. Number 11, the property will be screened from adjacent properties, no lighting trespassing onto adjacent properties. And then the applicant had proposed this condition 11 to allow VMRC, local law enforcement, and local fire and rescue to use the site for access to the waterway. And then prior to any site development, they have to get all approval from all the appropriate boards and commissions. And then prior to final CO development, design, and construction with all the required regulations. And then this is a catchall, when there's a conflict between the conditional use permit or other local regulations, the most stringent shall apply. And again, this is probably the, this condition is again, meant to allow the flexibility to allow them to continue to use the site for loading and offloading and improve the access to the site. to the site. And then the, as you know, a conditional use permit is only valid for a certain period of time. And basically, we're going to have that time set after they get site plan approval of the building. So that gives them the flexibility to continue to use the site while they can then fix up the building after they get a site plan approval. So that's the end of my presentation. The applicants are here if you have any questions, but they don't have a formal presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ortiz. We'll open it up for public comment. Public comment. Anyone like to come forward?
Hi, I'm Joanne Hamlin, and I'm here to talk about the potential for an off-leash dog park in Gloucester. I know you've heard it before, but we want to just keep talking about it and hope that it'll change some opinions.
This is the public hearing on this.
Oh, I am so sorry. Nobody came up, so I thought it was time. I'll go hush, I'll be back. Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay.
I'm sure she understands. She shared that public comment was already held, too.
Yes.
Well, they might let her talk.
Okay.
Any public comment for the public hearing? None? Okay. Any board discussion?
Having read all this and listened to the staff, I think this is a great use of the property. I think that in terms of economic benefit, this is a phenomenal use. And I think the applicant, based on what I'm seeing, is going to be very good at bringing the property back to what it was used to in the past. The only question I had was access for emergency vehicles. Is there going to be like a ramp that they can use to launch? Okay, that's good, because most of the vehicles and boats they use are small boats, so that's great. And I think this was a great presentation, and I fully support it.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would echo Dr. Orth's comments. I think it's a great opportunity for the community. I think we should be supporting our watermen, and it's an economic benefit. It fits with our comprehensive plan. And I know the applicants have put in a lot of hard work to reach this point, and so appreciate their hard work as well as the planning department in providing this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was told I'd be beat up if I spent too much time. So it's a very good presentation, and I'm going to approve it, yeah, so don't beat me up.
And again, if there's anything we can do to help out, you know, we see the benefit to this, and if there are issues, you know, let us know how we can facilitate anything that comes up for you guys.
There's a resolution on page 91 to approve this project, the CUP. I'm in favor of the school.
Wait a second.
Second.
Question? A question?
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I know this is out of order, but I know there's an individual here that just tried to speak.
Yes.
Perhaps you would have a consensus to allow her to have her three minutes?
Yes, sir. We will. Yes.
We don't know each other, so.
We don't know you.
I'm sorry. I totally misunderstood.
In three minutes, you have to tell your name, your magistrate district, and then you have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Joanne Hamlin, Petsworth Magisterial District. And I'm here to talk about advocacy again for an off-leash dog park. I was here, I think, a couple of months ago. So it's needed now. It's not five years from now, and that's the feedback that we got from the last meeting. There are several possible areas that could be considered for an off-leash dog park. Ark Park has two backfields that are not being used for anything. Brown Park has an open cleared area right next to the skate park. Land appears to be available at Woodville Park. And then also at Beaver Dam, there's a clear area between the fencing and the pond adjacent to the community building. So there are quite a few areas that could be used. And there's also the fields adjacent to the previous page middle school on 17. I don't know if that's Parks and Rec property or not, but that's a good already cleared area that could be used. I have visited a couple of off-leash dog parks in Williamsburg. There are two. There's one at Waller Mill Park. There's another one at Veterans Park. And the persons in charge at both parks have indicated that the parks have been operational for a number of years with no serious problems. They each have clear guidelines posted by the entry gate, making it very clear that when you enter the area with your dog, you, the owner, and not the dog, are responsible for what happens inside. Other requirements are that dogs' vaccinations and registration are up to date, various rules regarding when a dog must not enter, such as if they're in heat, if they're vicious dogs, dogs that might be sick. The Waller Mill Park is approximately one and a half acres. The Veterans Park is about 15,000 square feet or .3 acres. And both of the parks have separate fenced space for large dogs that are 30 pounds or more and small dogs that are less than 30 pounds. And they both have a safe entry area and a pet sanitation station. And I've spoken with representatives from both of these parks that would be willing to share information and answer questions based on their experience with the off-leash parks that they supervise. And I have their information that I'll give to you. I have also a poster that I'll give to you that goes over the rules and regulations that they have posted, which will make it pretty clear that it's the owner's responsibility, no liability to Parks and Rec, if it's stated correctly. So final things are that the off-leash dog parks are good for dogs. I think we talked about that before. Good for the dog owners, because just watching them play off-leash is pure joy, and we get to socialize with other dog owners as well. It's also attractive to visitors that come to our county here for vacation or whatever to have a place to go with their animals, that they can run and play off-leash. So we're still hoping that it'll be sooner than five years and that we can get this done. Good for our pet owners and good for our pets. Thank you for letting me speak again. Sorry I came out of order.
Okay, thank you. That's okay. Thank you so much, ma'am. And we do recognize that you had some other people here as well that were supporting you. And I speak on behalf of this board. We do hear you. We are listening. We do hear you. Okay, if anything else, we'll move on to our regular agenda. Draft consent order for VPDES permit, DEQ, Mr. Wilmot and Ms. Lag.
It doesn't matter. I didn't prepare a presentation.
Right, well, then I can start. Tonight, you have the pleasure of considering whether to agree to the Department of Environmental Quality's consent order regarding a notice of violation issued to the county in May of last year concerning three alleged exceedances of our chloride's permit level discharge at the Beaver Dam Outfall 001. What DEQ alleges and what the notice of violation alleged in May of last year was that the county exceeded its permit levels, its VPDES permit level, chloride's emission levels. And the consent order seeks to resolve that notice of violation. And you have in your packet commencing at page 234 the materials associated with this matter, including a resolution approving execution of the consent order on page 235. You are not constrained, you're not required to accept this consent order, but what it tries to do is resolve the situation between the county and DEQ with reference to this chloride's level emission, exceedance allegation. So what the consent order does in sum is calls for the payment by the county of a civil penalty in the amount of $8,370.25 for the three months which the county is alleged to exceed the, exceed of the chloride's level emissions, which is January, February, and March of 2024.
Are they going to leave us alone after this?
Well...
Are they going to ask for $8,000 every quarter?
The hope is that they will leave us alone.
Because they don't know what they want, anyway.
Well, the consent order calls for the county to address the situation and calls for the county to make inroads and efforts into complying with the permit levels. And we have three options as to which path we're going to utilize to do that. I've been told that the county is fairly confident that we can achieve one of those, at least one of those three methods in compliance with the consent order. We tried to negotiate the terms of the consent order with DEQ. We were invited to negotiate the terms of the consent order with DEQ. DEQ was not amenable to our suggested modifications, other than correcting their errors, which I did. They had us cited with some Colonial Heights violation, which, of course, we're not in Colonial Heights. I don't think we've ever been in Colonial Heights. Well, I have, but I'm just driving through. So, no, we corrected the errors, but one of the things, Mr. Bizani, I wanted to do was to protect the county and to ensure that this consent order addresses all of the chloride's level emission violations, either perceived or real. They were not of a mind to do that. What they said was, we will not ping you with, or we won't cite you with, another chloride's level violation if you're diligently pursuing the actions you're agreeing to under this consent order. They told us that. Well, you and I are of a mind here. Yeah, I don't believe what people say. I believe what they write and they agree to as far as documentation is concerned. But they're not going to agree to that. So this is the next best thing. So this is the box that Carol Merrill is now standing in front of. So you might want to pick that, because it's usually better than what's behind door number one. So if you don't approve this, which you don't have to, then the DEQ can pursue the violations administratively, and you may face a higher level of fine, and they can pursue it judicially in the courts.
So they probably spent $300,000 just to fine us for $8,000 from their staff?
Well, you know, I highly doubt that, because this is all boilerplate stuff. We give them the data, which we did. We gave them the data from the Outfall 001, which, according to our data, indicated that we exceeded the chloride's level. It's our data, it's our outfall, and that's what the permit calls for. So we told them that we violated our permit. So they have this boilerplate NOV and consent order, which all they have to do is plug in our violation and permit level exceedance and put it in their little program and churn it out. I don't think it would take more than 10 minutes. So, no, they didn't, no, they didn't spend much time on it. So my recommendation is, and you're going to hear from someone who knows more than I do, Katie, about this, is that you accept this as basically a slap on the wrist, at least initially, but only if you have a comfort level that we can do what this order requires us to do. So let me turn it over to Katie.
I believe so. So there's a couple of things that I want to walk through the consent order with you, and you have it in your packet. I actually printed mine with page numbers so that I don't get mixed up this time. So as part of the consent order, Mr. Wilmot mentioned the civil penalties. Those first seven or eight pages are exactly that, they're boilerplate. After that comes the schedule of compliance. So this is how the county is going to comply in very general terms. So DEQ has said to us, we're not going to tell you the specifics of how you're going to comply. We just want you to comply, and this is the timeline in which to do it. So starting on page 244 of your packet, it goes through the schedule of compliance. So immediately is to maximize the use of the surface water plant and minimize the use of the RO plant, which we do based on demand and operational needs, anyway. Then it gets into the longer-term chloride mitigation project. So what, within six months or 180 days of the effective date of this order, so that means after it has been fully signed and executed through the county as well as DEQ, within 180 days, we have to provide to DEQ one of these three options. So the first option is an engineering report of upgrades and/or expansion to the surface water plant and/or reverse osmosis plant, which demonstrates then that we can achieve long-term durable compliance. That's what this entire thing is about, is can we achieve long-term durable compliance with the permit limits that they're setting forth?
But that's with Outfall 001?
Correct.
Or we're going to change our outfall? We're not going to change the outfall?
So we have changed immediately the sampling point for Outfall 001. So it is still labeled as Outfall 001, but the sampling point has changed with approval from DEQ because it follows a man-made channel before it goes into the swamp.
Is that written approval from them?
Yes. It will actually be documented. It's already documented in the water treatment plant's operations and maintenance manual that was updated immediately. And then it will be as part of the new 50s.
So the chloride levels in the new places lower than the 001?
They are lower.
But not much lower?
No.
Okay.
So the second option is to provide that same concept engineering report for a new outfall that essentially discharges our water into brackish water somewhere nearby, which is something we've conceptually looked at, which would be the Ware River, at $4 million or so. The third option, which is the one that we are most interested in, is an approvable concept engineering report that demonstrates that Gloucester can achieve long-term durable compliance with the permit. It's vague, and it is approvable, as Mr. Wilmot likes that word.
I do.
So based on those three options that have been provided to us, we feel pretty confident that we can comply. So that's within 180 days of the full execution of this consent order. Prior to that, we have to provide within 30 days an interim mitigation plan, which we have begun a sort of Phase 1A approach to. And you've heard me talk about before, the connectors between outfalls to abandon an outfall and as well as adding SCADA to, and flow meters to spillway and the outfall, so that we can measure in real time what the flow is over the spillway, what the chlorides are coming out of the outfall, so that we can then automatically adjust how we're utilizing that reverse osmosis plant. So that's happening, that RO connector is happening immediately. It's under contract. The spillway project will be our next step towards this interim mitigation plan, and we have the budget for that. Our hope is that we can provide this concept engineering report to make that our long-term durable compliance.
Who's doing that?
So we have a consulting engineer who has helped us with all of these plans and has helped us through quite a lot of this over the last year plus. So again, this is whether or not it becomes an approved CER. So we believe it's approvable. It is whether or not it gets approved. There are further steps after that. There are additional projects that we can undertake that, of course, will get more costly. So that's why I'm saying I believe we can comply. It's just what those next steps are going to be and how far. Some of these interim items that we've talked about before, DEQ has said, but not put in writing, that those are not long-term compliance. Those are considered interim. But I have yet to see that in writing or where the state... But I have yet to see that in writing or where the state requires that. So all of this, again, depending on how things go and which report they approve, we could solve the problem for $400,000. We could solve the problem for $1 million, or we could solve the problem for 17 million, because we could end up looking at water treatment plant expansion being the only approved report. So that is where we are right now.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I can, one of the other things that we've discussed numerous times is if necessary legislative action could be, or assistance could be requested. So I don't think anybody wants to go that direction to start with, but if things aren't working, that's the other thing, is to talk to our legislators about why this should not be a problem.
Can we talk, keep talking?
Informally, yes, but we haven't had a request, so he just knows we're dealing with something with DEQ.
Any, any other questions, comments? Dr. Or...
Go over those amounts again, from which scenario?
It's, it's a lot. So our, the project that we're undertaking right now, which is our connector project, because we have to abandon well number two and outfall 003, which is not part of this issue. And we are also abandoning outfall 002. And so we're connecting everything that goes to outfall two, just to make it shorter, is now going to outfall one. So that's step one. That's happening right now, probably about $125,000. The next piece of that, which would be our interim, but potentially long-term solution, would be to add the spillway project, which is going to be the flow meter, the chloride meter that measures everything simultaneously hooked up to SCADA, so that if we're seeing our chloride levels are too high and we don't have enough water coming over the spillway, we won't be using the RO plant, so that therefore we are not in non-compliance. That project would be another $250,000, $300,000. Again, we have that budgeted this year. There was about $470,000 budgeted this year for Viptes compliance. The next potential step could be bringing in, drawing in raw water from the reservoir and essentially mixing it before it goes to the outfall. That will probably cost us $800,000 to $900,000. After that, the other options we have could be groundwater injection. We haven't really explored the cost of that much, but we also know that we need to expand the plant anyway, and so that's where that 17 million high-end came from.
So, I got to say... Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
So just for the public's edification, we're pouring salt water into a salt water environment. This is their problem. We're pouring salt water that's probably less salty than the seawater we're pouring it into, and yet they have a problem with that.
So and our issue with coming into compliance is that the water that we're drawing out of the ground already has the high chloride limit, and we've already exceeded it. But it's part of the treatment process, and they're concerned about the water that is going, being released back into the swamp.
Which is salty water, or brackish?
I don't know that the swamp is.
The swamp is probably fresh.
I'm looking at this, and I'm looking at the charge here, the $8,000. But we have a civil charge subtotal and aggravating factor subtotal of $11,957. But you can sell this quickly with 30% off. I think that's just something not right about that. 30%, they giving you 30% off?
If you pay today.
If you pay...
If you pay today.
If you pay today, if you get on...
What a deal.
Wow.
So a lot of these penalties are, they have an entirely different guidance document. I did speak to the enforcement agent about all of these penalties. These, at this point, are non-negotiable. So the, the most serious one, or the highest dollar figure, is the chloride exceedances. And that is because we hit them three months in a row. So you don't get a notice of violation until you have a certain number of warning letters first. Prior to my arrival, there had been some warning letters, not necessarily for this particular item, but they, they were there. These chloride limits came into effect in December of 22, 23, which is why they started dinging us in January of '24. When you get to four warning letters is when you trigger the notice of violation. You only see three here because in February, DEQ did a surprise inspection of our water treatment plant. And so one of the items was a failure to maintain your facility or treatment system, which is what one of the other charges is. And this references sludge from our drying pond that got into the outfall. So at the time, we didn't have the equipment or the manpower to constantly move the sludge around and get it to the drying pad. That's since been taken care of. There are some erosion issues at our outfalls. Those are being taken care of. So all of those things triggered this NOV sooner rather than later.
I'd like to definitely keep on this.
Okay. All right. Well, we have a resolution on page 235.
Motion to approve. Second.
Ms. Steele.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Bizani?
Yes.
Mr. Nakosha?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Dr. Or. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Ms. La, before you leave, thank you for all your hard work and keeping us informed on this. I know it's not been an easy task for you, but you're doing an incredible job to keep, to keep the water flowing.
Well, I do this, as Dr. Orth mentioned, the folks do this in, in the department.
Well, you can thank them for us as well, because they're not here tonight to hear.
The EPA may become a thing of the past, so this may be overcome by events anyway, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Okay, board appointments. What do we have? We have nothing, we have just one.
We have two.
Two?
Yep. Pink sheet.
Yes.
And second, Ms. Pritchett, stay on the community policy. I'll second that one.
Second, okay.
I will have one for the Planning District Commission, hopefully at our April meeting. I have an interested person, but they are not ready to fill out the board bank, and he'll be an excellent addition.
Okay, thank you. So we've had the motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, moving on. County attorney item. He said enough.
I've accepted a job at the DEQ. No, no. I wish it was being brackish.
You're going to get a 30% discount in salary.
Yes, 30% discount.
Only when they pay him today for a hamburger on Tuesday.
For, for putting things in a form. Yes.
Okay. Boards and commission reports. We did that, I'm sorry. Supervisor discussion. Supervisor discussion. Dr. Or.
With regard to the request by the gentleman from the...
Zo.
Zo. Mr. Zo. What do we do? I mean, he made a valid request, do we...
May I, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
You should have each received, and perhaps you have, and read...
Yeah. His letter.
My, his letter, and my response, not to him directly, but to the board. I would hope that you would weigh the contents of that memo from me into any response you fashioned to Mr. Zo. I would urge that you respond to Mr. Zo as a board, because he communicated to you as a board. But the history of the Gloucester Daffodil Festival has been that no alcohol sales or consumption is allowed as part of the event. Now, that's a decision which has been made by administration with the Board of Supervisors' blessing, or at least implicit consent, given the administrator's authority to generally control county property. It's gone, my understanding, it's gone very well over the years, and it's, it's a practice that you should consider carefully before you dictate change, too. But I appreciate Mr. Zo and his business and his efforts in the county to expand his business and business throughout the county. But the history of the Daffodil Festival is that, as you're aware, it's held on county property primarily, and then portions of it is, are held, at least in part, on state-owned property, VDOT-owned property. And that has not allowed the sale or consumption of alcoholic beverages. They have the beer gardens, they have private properties in close proximity to the Daffodil Festival which sell alcohol, businesses which sell alcohol and allow its consumption. So unless Ms. Steele is of a mind to change that policy, then the only way it would change would be for the Board of Supervisors to dictate its change. So that's where we are. If you're not going to dictate a change, and I don't recommend that you do, notwithstanding my predilections, I would suggest that you communicate to Mr. Zo as a board that you appreciate his concerns, but that the Daffodil Festival does not involve the sale or consumption of alcoholic beverages.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Steele, do you happen to know off the top of your head when the application process opens for vendors in accordance to when the festival starts? The reason I ask this is, there's no way we can change this for this year. Absolutely no way. If this is something we want to contemplate, then we would need to have this discussion in such time that we could, if, if, if this board is of mind to change it, we would need to have this conversation in time that that message would be known for next year's festival.
If I may.
Please.
The, the applications usually open September, October, because they're making final selections in the beginning of January. So, you're welcome.
Thank you for the multiple hats.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Speaking of multiple hats, going back in time, there was a request that the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee considered, and there was a momentum to bring to the board a potential ordinance change to allow alcohol on county property at parks for specific events. I think there's always been a mixed feeling about the boards, but ever since I was here, people wanted to do parties at Gloucester Point Beach and thought they could help raise so much money. And of course, I think of that as being a very small area and probably not where you want to have alcohol, just like Mr. Wilmot's, you know, wasting a special concern about the Court Circle properties or the courthouse area. But I think if the board wants to consider something that you would maybe want to think beyond Daffodil Festival, in fact, there was enabling legislation that allows open carry at certain kinds of things on Main Street and all that, which there was a question that was brought up about that, and it's only, again, for certain events. So it's, I think it starts with the principle of, do you want to open up what could be Pandora's box and maybe has moral consequences for some individuals? Or are you looking at, this is an opportunity, there are many places, Macha Comico State Park has alcohol allowed on their property. You know, so state parks do it, I'm sure national parks do for certain circumstances. I would assume they do.
Yorktown does it, or some of those.
Yorktown, right. So there's certain times where, and Newport News has one festival where they allow it and one major festival where they don't. You know, it's a family focus versus not. So I would look at it as a big picture and not just this one particular request, which is too late to answer this year, anyway.
The only addition I would add to that is that you have an ordinance which prohibits alcoholic beverages in county parks, and this is not a park.
Correct.
So the Daffodil Festival is not on a park. So that's why the fallback is the county administrator's authority to dictate what's allowed and what's not allowed, absent a contrary directive by the Board of Supervisors. So although you might want to look at park events like Beaver Dam or, you know, Ark Park or wherever it may be, with reference to allowing alcoholic beverage consumption and sales, you don't have to marry the two. They're, they're, they're not exactly the same, because this is not a county park.
No, absolutely true. I just think if you're going to tackle the subject, then the board would want to look at both areas, not just look at the courthouse area.
Correct. And as, sitting here, and I wanted to ask that question because I wanted to be sure that if we wanted to make that change, we don't wait and do it October of next year, and we're already missed another year. Me personally, I've come to the Daffodil Festival for as long as I can remember. To me, where they used to have the Brews and Blues down here would be a perfect place for someone to start a, instead of a beer garden, a wine garden, and maybe we get several vineyards in here. You know, I know that's private property, and it's up to whomever owns it at this time, but I think that something along those lines would probably be a better suited than allowing that to just sit in the middle of some other vendors or even down in where we have the food court at it. But I do think it is something we have to have some further discussion on, and Mr. Wilmot's information that he sent, I haven't got to read it in enough detail to contemplate talking about it tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir.
So who's, so who's going to write the letter? Yeah, we should certainly respond to him, so that come from the chair?
Yeah, we'll get the response.
Maybe you can work with Mr. Wilmot and Ms. Steele to draft an appropriate language that says, "Thank you, but for the time being..."
Can convey that the board will be carefully looking at this in the very near future.
And it could be something we get the chamber to look at doing on the Daffodil Festival weekend, if they can find somewhere to do it, because they do the other one in September. I mean, it'd be a smaller, much smaller scale, but I think there's a way to accomplish this where it's not done on county property and we don't have to go through the ordinance change.
And I think he may already know that. I mean, you have the fire department land right there that they haven't yet built their fire station on. I mean, it'd be an ideal place.
Be a good fundraiser.
So he could pair with the fire department, and exactly. So there are multiple, there are multiple properties in close proximity to the Daffodil Festival that can and are utilized for this purpose. So it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily shut him out from participating, it's just not part of the Daffodil Festival proper.
This year. Okay. Okay. No further discussion, okay.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?